And so, welcome, welcome. Glad you're here. By way of backdrop, August 24th, the college council met. We developed like a one-year plan for our strategic plan. But we wanted the opportunity to give you a draft of a five-year plan that we reviewed August 24th. But we felt it was important to have the entire campus take a look at it, give suggestions. I have three-by-five cards on your seats. We only have an hour, so we're going to move quickly. And of course, we'll take questions toward the end. But if there are some ideas or comments you would like to make and you couldn't have the opportunity to say it here, please write them down. We will collect all that. Sarah Master will be assisting me to collect this information so we can finalize our five-year plan. And the district finished their five-year plan last spring. So we followed their lead on their goals and have aligned ourselves, and we'll talk about that when we reach that slide, our strategic plan with their strategic plan, which by the way, is perfect for the new student-centered funding formula, which we're going to talk about because we've aligned our approach to that funding formula with our strategic plans. And that's something that the state chancellor would like to have. So, welcome again. Good to see you all. And spring's going well, I mean, fall's going well, I hope. I'm already jumping to spring. So we have the welcome by me overview I kind of gave you, which is the fact that today we're going to talk about a little bit about AB 705 and guided pathways. And we want to do that by way of context. You can't have a strategic plan unless you look at the environment that, you know, assess our external and internal environment, which is what we plan to do. And AB 705 and guided pathways is particularly powerful with what's going on in our environment right now. Then I'll talk about the student-centered funding formula, give you a quick reminder for those of you who haven't really reviewed it or understood it, just give you an idea what it is, and then talk about our strategic plan. And I'll carry that conversation, but I may ask Sarah for some assistance with some of the metrics that we have embedded. So I will invite Vice President Albo Lopez to come on up and give a little bit overview of the AB 705 and guided pathways.
Good afternoon, everyone. So we have some exciting topics to go over. How many of you know about AB 705? Raise your hand. All right. How many of you know about guided pathways? All right. So we're ahead of the curve. Great. So I just want to go over a little bit about AB 705. It's going to impact us beginning fall of 2019. Essentially, students that are going to be joining us after July or June 1st of next in the summer will be directly placed into college-level English and college-level math. And that's going to be a little tricky because as you know, we have students that take classes that are two and three levels below. But our English and our math department are creating new courses that have embedded labs and extra content. We're putting some new curriculum through. We're sending some folks out to have some training on supplemental instruction where we have tutors in the classroom. So this is going to change kind of how we do business with our students in regard to English and math. The state also expects that we will have our students complete transfer-level English and math in one year. And that's also going to be tied to our funding formula. So I would say in the next two or three months, you'll hear some more information directly from math and English as to what the placements will look like, what the courses will look like, and how we're going to message to students, what their options are. Even though they can directly place into those college-level classes, doesn't mean that they can't remediate other ways to prepare themselves to be successful in class. Any questions on AB 705? All right. So guided pathways. Last year, we kind of had a big launch, and we've been talking for the past year about guided pathways in general. We receive funding from the state to kind of reorganize how we do business and present our curriculum and our courses and our programs to our students. There are four pillars. The first is that we create clear pathways. Right now, some students don't really know what their major is, or the program of study is, or how they get from start to finish in two years. We need to help them choose and enter their pathways. So the work that we do in our career center and with our onboarding activities to help students identify what their long-term goals are. We need to keep in touch with students so that they actually stay on their path and they finish. And then we have to make sure that the learning that needs to take happen in that pathway is happening, and that we're preparing our students either for a job, transfer, et cetera. So we have a guided pathways steering committee that works under the auspices of the Senate on kind of the instructional and the curriculum piece of work. And then we also have, these are kind of the elements, I'll strip through here. We also have what's called our C's committee, which is Student Equity, Access, and Success. And that committee, let's see if this has later on it. That committee has teams that work on various processes across the college. So in this new kind of world that we're moving into, you're going to start to see an integration of student services and academic affairs. So this is our Mission Eagle that was designed, co-designed between some folks in C's and with our guided pathways steering committee. And you'll see that we have different activities that are taking place, and some of them are in their early phases. That's where you'll see planning. Some of them are kind of moving to the next step, and those are our inquiry. So in this next year, you're going to see these two teams working together to take the college to the next level in redesign and providing kind of those pathways for our students. Questions on that?
Thank you, Nicole. How cool is that eagle? That's really cool. I like that. By the way, the state has adopted SEA, C, Student Equity and Access. And so we have C's. So we were before the state. So let's get to the funding formula. Up there, you'll see LA Mission College and LA Community College District. The new funding formula includes three basic allocations. One is what they call base allocation or enrollment, which is the big green part, which you'll see, you can read FTEs. For the district is 45%, and FTEs for us is also 42%, given our current enrollment and data. So we're moving from a 100% enrollment FTEs now to base allocation FTEs is 60% of our funding over the next three years. It will kick in fall '22. So they're giving us three years to kind of prepare for all this and build our systems and enrollment. The other 20% is what they call supplemental or equity. You'll see the district is 24% of their funding will come that way. And for us, we're at 24% as well. This is current data based on 1718 data, which may change in 1819, 1920, and so forth. We serve a large population of low-income students in our area, as well as the district, AB 540 students, and what we call Promise students, which used to be Board of Governors, but it's Promise grant students. And we keep growing that Promise population. The more we grow it, the more funding we get. And those are students who do 12 units to be part of the Promise program. And then the third area is what we call success, student success. And that's 15%, which is ADT, transfer, AAAS, degree certificate, 18-unit certificate, nine-unit certificate, and also includes transfer, I think I mentioned, as well as living wage. There's some metrics around if they go into the workforce, are they getting living wage jobs? And if so, you get points for that. Now, going back to the base allocation, I said 42%, but it's actually, if you add some of the other activities with that, the blue, the orange, the gray, you're looking at special admit is 5%. That's dual enrollment. So they call it special admit. Those are the high school students taking our classes, college credit classes right now. And right now, I think we have 68 sections, 68 classes in the fall, this fall. Then non-credit enhanced at the very top is 3%. Non-credit FTS is 1%. So enhanced, you get more points for non-credit enhanced. And then for non-credit FTEs, which is regular non-credit, you get, we're at 1%. Then we have the basic allocation fixed of 10%. So actually, if you add all that up, that gives you the base allocation, but potential areas for growth, particularly non-credit and dual enrollment and concurrent enrollment are available to us. So the picture of funding has changed, which means our priorities have to change, our emphasis has to change to go after maximum funding. So this is 1718, we'll look at 1819, 1920, 2021. Hopefully, we'll grow in these areas. So to get us there, I have prepared an action plan for the college, which looks at the three big areas, enrollment, and looks at what we're going to do with dual enrollment. And then DSP means District Strategic Plan. So dual enrollment is in the district strategic plan. And then SMP is Strategic Master Plan. That's our plan. And it is 1.1. So it's in our strategic plan that we do dual enrollment. We have to find ways to make that happen. So we're going to fill out this entire grid. We have actions associated with dual enrollment. We're going to have to look at which staff and faculty will be involved, what kind of materials are they going to need. Then we have to figure out how much it's going to cost. Then we got to figure out where we're going to get the money. Once we figure out how much it'll cost, and then what's the outcome. So for dual enrollment, we're going to fill in those areas. And we've already, are looking at some dual enrollment programs. We're going in the direction of three-year program. In other words, instead of a high school calling and saying, "I want astronomy this semester," no, next semester I'll have oceanography, or I need kinesiology, we would rather them say, "Here's a three-year program from the ninth, the 10, 11, 12, or ninth, 10, 11, 12, that your students can enroll every year with a set program." Why is that important? Because high schools have to have schedules. And we need schedules. It's very difficult to staff or faculty when we don't know what they want the next semester, or they just barely tell us. But if we know over time, they're going to want this pathway program, and it could be a transfer pathway, a GETC pathway, in other words, get rid of, get your GED, GE's done, or it could be a career technical education pathway, a biotech pathway. They may want that. They may want an IT pathway, cloud computing pathway, which now we're going to be doing. So this will help us with programming. This will help us with making sure our faculty can get there. So I don't want to spend too much time on this. But you see, we have non-credit. We've got a lot of things we want to do there. Whoops, sorry. We have ongoing general enrollment that we have to pay attention to. Then we have the equity or supplemental, and A is Pell at the bottom. 40% of all LACC students actually get Pell out of 100% that are eligible. So we realize somehow, for some reason, our students aren't going after financial aid. They're getting the Board of Governors or the Promise, but they're not applying for Pell. Or if they do apply for Pell, somehow they abandon the process. It's too difficult. The verification doesn't come in on time. They don't get the right paperwork in. We have to go back and call them for the paperwork. By the time they get all that finished, it's over, and they think, "Well, I can't apply for Pell." So we're really going to do a big push to ensure that our students go ahead and apply and receive Pell. And we're going to have to support Dennis and his staff with a campus-wide effort on that. And so we're going to talk more about what that looks like. So that's a big, big one for us. And then California Promise, we have to grow the Promise, get more students in the Promise. It's full-time students. We have to do more with AB 540 students because we get points for them too. So our undocumented population, we have to pay attention to them, make sure that they're eligible and can come in for AB 540. And then finally, the third component, student success, transfer-level English and math in their first year, we get big points for that. General transfer, we have to increase transfer. Increase the number of students transferred to four-year. AAAS, ADT certificates, 16-plus units, nine or more CE units, career education, and the living wage. There's all actions that we're going to have to pay attention. It'll include faculty, departments, academic departments. But I want you to know something. Student services is going to be really called to task. A lot of stuff has to happen in student support services because we need our students to be successful. So they're going to be called to task about implementing much of this activity. Any questions on this action plan? It's based on the new funding formula. All right. So we're going to start filling this out. We'll be in contact with you as we see your role in all this. We, as faculty, need to encourage our students to think about transfer in the classroom. You should be talking to them about transfer. We're going to give you all talking points about Pell, for instance. I mean, how many of you know how Pell works? Do you have any idea? And I'm speaking mostly to faculty. Dennis knows, yes, our director of financial aid. Are there cutoff dates, deadlines to submit for Pell? The answer is no. You can submit for Pell anytime. And should you hold on to your Pell until you go to CSUN? Should you wait till you go to UCLA or CSUN before you take your Pell because you might run out? The answer is no. You shouldn't wait. 70% of our students are working 20 to 40 hours a week. They're working a lot of hours just to go to school. If they had Pell, maybe they could reduce their hours or not have to work. So there's a lot we need to do as faculty to make sure our students understand what's available for them. So I want to move forward now to the strategic plan. The first goal is expand access to educational programs and services that meet community and student needs through enhanced outreach and course offerings. And that includes local high school students, dual enrollment. That includes a LA college promise. That includes expanding non-credit. That includes expanding career ed. That includes expanding online offerings. We need to think about that very carefully to garner the enrollment we need and success we need. So we expand online offerings, online pathways in accordance with guided pathways, and finally improve outreach through effective marketing and branding. So we're going to do much more in the area of marketing and branding. We've asked, I've asked the district for $60,000 immediately to give to us so we can implement some marketing and branding activity. I've asked Alejandro, he's met with Dennis, we're going to do a whole marketing around Pell. And a lot of our marketing is going to be targeted to these funding formula priorities. So we're going to start with Pell, encourage our students to apply and get Pell. So that's goal one, expand access. Any questions? Now, if something comes to mind in expanding access that you would like to include, feel free. If not, write it down on a card. We'll be sure to pay attention to that. So that's goal one. Goal two is student-centered institution that effectively supports students in attaining their educational goals. That has to do with all the activities around supporting our students. Offer student services with high standard for customer service. Somebody the other day said, "I'd rather use a different word than customer service." I think it was Larry Resendez. What was the word, Larry? Student engagement. I like that better, too. So write that down on your card, and we'll think about that one. But the idea behind it, that word, customer service, actually came from the district, is we have to pay attention not only to our students, but to each other. If a faculty member calls A and R or financial aid, A and R and financial aid should get back to the faculty member. If A and R is contacting a faculty member, faculty member should provide customer service to A and R. We have to support each other. This is how we're going to get this done. Foster an environment that embraces diversity. Increase full-time enrollment through flexible scheduling and program offerings. Ensure scheduled classes. Offerings meet the needs of students, align with guided pathways. Review and refine curriculum and programs, ensure they're responsive to student and industry needs. So I mentioned cloud computing. We're one of 19 colleges that are going to be offering Amazon Web Services, cloud computing training. And the idea behind that is to get our students jobs because cloud computing is huge, and there's going to be a big field for cloud computing folks. In fact, our district is going to go cloud computing. And they're looking for people to do it. So that's responsive to industry needs. Provide technology to effectively serve students. That's a biggie. We all have suffered last year with SIS. So we got to make sure we serve our students. Ensure that all students have access to financial aid. Increase student persistence and increase student participation in activities including athletics and governance and decision-making. So I have a lot of ideas around student activities, and I haven't had a chance to share them with Robert Crossliet and student services folks. But I think we need a booster club here. We need to get students really engaged. So I'm going to talk more about that. I've seen some really good examples at other colleges, and it lifts, we need more activities for our students on campus. And more barbecues. Danny wants to have barbecues. Yes?
And then that hurts.
What's that?
Arts.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, should have given you the microphone. Deborah said, "And art." So let's include athletics, art, or the arts, the arts, and governance, decision-making. Thank you. Definitely more theater arts, more visual arts, more music. Absolutely. That really encourages students to continue. Goal three, increase student success and equity. Increase the percentage of students completing transfer-level English in their first year. Increase completion degrees, certificates, number of students transferring, decrease time to completion because we get points if they leave us in three years as opposed to four or five. Increase career and job placement rates and reduce equity gaps in student achievement. So equity gaps in student achievement is interesting because K-12, now given this funding formula direction, it really, K-12 did this four or five years ago under their funding formula, what they call local control funding formula for K-12. And what they did with local control was bump up and give districts and schools supplemental funds to serve low-income ELL foster children. So this model we have here on the equity side is very much similar to K-12, what they've done. But what K-12 has done, and I don't think you all know this, is they've gone away from API scores, which is the, what's that, academic performance index as evaluating schools. They've gone away from that, and they've gone into disaggregated data. How are you doing with ELL? How are you doing with special ed? How are you doing with African-American? How are you doing with male? How are you doing with female? How are you doing Latinos? How are you doing with low income? So they have all these categories, and they evaluate districts based on those categories. A red is, you're not doing very well at all. A blue is, you're doing great. But between that, you have orange, yellow, and green. If you get two reds on your school, then you have to be intervened. TA, technical assistance, has to be given you. 50% of the districts in LA have reds in special ed. Did you know that? Special education, San Marino got a red in special ed. A rich district. Pasadena got a red in special education. I'm only picking that one. I think over time, equity is going to continue to be an issue. Eventually, they may disaggregate the data for community colleges. Enhance organizational effectiveness to improve infrastructure, expand communication and training. Provide campus facilities that are clean and safe. I must say, they're much cleaner and safer. The facilities are looking really good. Ensure that all campus locations have equal access to facilities. Ensure the college website is up to date. That's a big one. Website. Now, the district's thinking about putting this all on one platform for the websites and making it much more navigation-friendly. The district website is really bad. It's a mess. I mean, I have to admit it. I can't even figure it out. So can you imagine what a student has to go through when they want to say, "Well, let me find out about LACC. Oh, by the way, I'm interested in the Valley." Oh, I think I, by the time they get to us, you know, they're already tired. So Alejandro and I have been talking about our website and how we can continue to make it easy, seamless. Important information has to be upfront, not buried in content 15 pages deep to find out what day do I enroll? I mean, it's got to be very obvious. So we're going to do a lot more with websites. Increase professional development opportunities for faculty, staff, and administrators, and ensure timely evaluations. And then goal five, improve financial stability by eliminating inefficiencies, enhancing resource development and developing partnerships. Increase funding brought in through alternative sources such as grant development processes for curricular student support programs. And, you know, I have to say to par that I'm still working very hard to get a full-time grants coordinator to help us with that area of grants development. We've been, we've been very fortunate. We've been able to be successful without even, you know, by the hide of our faculty and staff that have worked extra hours. But we need that person. Develop community and business partnerships. Enhance the college foundation. And finally, identify and implement strategies to eliminate inefficiencies and streamline processes and resources, including the efficient use of facilities and increasing renewable energy sources. So those are the five goals with all the objectives. I'm open to questions, suggestions on, oh, good, we got good 20, 30 minutes. So give me some ideas. What do you think of those goals? Are we going in the right direction? Do you have any questions regarding the funding formula, guided pathways, AB 705? Yes, Paul?
You mentioned the living wage. What is that? We get points for students going and making living wage.
Yes. What the database the state's going to use is the Employment Development Department, EDD. And so they have the boundaries or parameters around what they consider living wage. Now, of course, for Los Angeles, the living wage is higher than, say, Bakersfield. So those adjustments will be made. But you know that LA is very expensive with regard to housing. to housing. So a living wage in LA will have to be at the appropriate level to be considered living wage. Uh, I don't have that information, Paul, but I'll look into it. Maybe Par, do you have, or do you have that, Sarah? Do you have that information? Thirteen fifty-six. That's considered living wage in Los Angeles. Wow. Okay, thirteen dollars and fifty-six cents. Got it? Yes, Par?
(inaudible) in fact, dream goals and objectives. So what is our timeline to achieve all these goals?
Our timeline to achieve these goals, uh, is we gotta start immediately developing the implementation of the actions, but Fall '22, we've gotta hit the peak with all these, as many as these possible. With regard to student funding formula, um, we have looked at eighteen, nineteen goals, which took two. Sarah, what were the two that we kind of focused on for eighteen, nineteen, had to do with, uh, priorities of the district? Financial aid and success measures. So the district said for eighteen, nineteen, "We'd like you to prioritize financial aid," which is the Pell, particularly the Pell situation, "and student success factors." In other words, how are you gonna increase your graduation rates, your completion rates, your certificate? They wanted us to pay attention to that eighteen, nineteen, which we have been doing. And then we need to phase in these other aspects over the next five years. But I would like to shoot for Fall '22 to be as far as we can, particularly with the metrics, the funding formula metrics. Yes?
Hello. My question is for students that take some time off after high school. They're not coming back with fresh English or math. So are these classes, these English 101 classes and math, I guess, 200 level classes, are they going to address their needs? Or how are they gonna be assessed when they come back, when they've been out of high school for a very long time?
So I might ask Vice President Alba Lopez to assist me, but basically, I think there's a ten-year window, if I recall. They're still gonna look at transcripts from high school to help determine what support services are necessary. Uh, so I'll let Vice President Alba Lopez talk about that.
So we're creating some curriculum in math, and we will eventually be creating some in English, where there's three tiers. And the lowest tier, um, will have like a corequisite that's required. The middle tier will have a corequisite or a lab that is optional or built into the class, and the top tier would just be for the regular students. Um, so we're working on those types of curricular options. And I mentioned earlier that we have to figure out how to message that to students, that's in a way that's understandable, um, so that they're selecting the right track, um, for their success.
I might add that the district academic senate has proposed increased funding for tutoring by the district, so, uh, that's their recommendation. We are going to expand tutoring significantly for the campus. We also are talking about supplemental instruction, which I think is what you said about labs, where they can get additional help while they're taking English 101. Get that assistance they need, uh, with math and English. So that's what everybody's gonna be doing up and down the state. We're all moving in this direction Fall '2019. All hundred-and-fifteen community colleges. Or a hundred-and-fourteen. Hundred-and-fifteen is the online college. See what they do. Okay, other questions? Yes, Jacob?
Thank you, Dr. Perez. Uh, my question's about AB 705 and ESL. Um, we know that we're still waiting for more details from the chancellor regarding ESL, but one thing we've heard lately is that we will still be allowed to use placement testing for ESL students coming in. Uh, we're currently using Accuplacer. Uh, will the college continue to fund Accuplacer as long as we're allowed to use it?
So the answer's yes, but Nicole, do you wanna chat with, chat about that?
So the ESL track for students is a lot more complicated than just having, um, native language, English speakers, um, coming to our campuses. So while they're working out those, um, issues, um, the Accuplacer test, um, can still be used, um, and we do have funding set aside. We weren't sure for a while, so we were buying just a few licenses at a time, but we will be funding that.
Good. Thank you. Other questions? Yes, ma'am. Veronica?
I know there was a question about livable wages, and I think that's really connected to housing. And before we can onboard and intake students, some of their basic needs have to be met. Um, I just read last week that Orange Coast Community College is, um, starting this, um, project to build housing near and on the community college campus to both increase enrollment and to help students. Is that something that our college or that our district is discussing? And if so, what has been shared on that?
Very good point. Um, the district has, and the board has, entertained, um, proposals about student housing. The latest pulse I took of that is they're gonna have a committee of the whole meeting on it and come up with a set of policies. My sense is the answer is yes. They're interested in it. Actually, this started back five years ago with Trustee Ng. He was really pushing this notion. Uh, and so if we're to look at housing here at Mission, I would need guidance from the board. I think I'll get that guidance, which would be a green light to look into it, and then we can go from there to see if there's some possibilities. Uh, there has been some discussion with us. Danny and I have had, you know, inquiries from, uh, private developers that wanna build student housing. We've even been approached by LA County about that. So it, I think it's something we can't say no to. I think it's something we really need to take a look at. So the answer is yes. We'll look into it. And we're one of the few that can do it, because we have land nearby. Yes, Filma?
So AB 705 and the new funding formula. You've mentioned that the state stated that we have a window of one year, they have to pass college-level math and English, right? In one year, right? In English and math, college-level. Okay, so if they don't, what are the ramifications? Does that mean that we might have students in the campus on their second or third year still trying to pass English 101 and college-level math without getting reimbursement from the state? What's the ramification?
Uh, well, I'm gonna ask Sarah or Vice President Nicole to talk about that. We, I don't know about the reimbursement thing. I hadn't thought of that. But what are our plans if they don't make it in one year?
So it's a little complicated. Um, students still have the repeatability option where they can take a class up to three times. We'll receive apportionment for the sixty percent, um, of the budget, but we will not receive the extra bump in funds, um, or the bonus in the equity allocation. However, we do have other dollars that come in, in a block grant, um, to give us, you know, additional support for those services. One of the things that will change over time, um, is that we'll be more intrusive or hands-on with our students and communicating with them and getting them the support services that they need in a different way than we do now.
Okay. Did that answer your question? There is repeatability. They can't take it. We will get apportionment. We're just not gonna get those additional dollars, because they didn't finish in one year. Another question?
Okay, so, so I'm looking at the funding formula, and it seems like there's a lot of tracking to be done, right? I mean, every student is gonna, is gonna be tracked by this magnificent computerized system. Am I... All right, so is this a system that the district holds? I mean, is there a, a system that is already in place that can track these things? Like I'm, as a student, I might not be passing math, but I am passing sociology or psychology, and this magical whatever computer system is saying, "This is how much this, this student is bringing into the, the college." Is that the way it works?
Yes, there is a MIS system that the state has put in place that will track all the students, uh, for enrollment. We've already done that, proficient in enrollment, uh, but it will track all enrollment, uh, full-time, part-time, everything, for the full-time equivalent. And then there is an equity, uh, tracking system for low-income AB 540 and Pell recipients. Uh, the state will say, "Well, how many Pell recipients did you get this year? Period." "Okay, a thousand? Okay." Or so forth. And then there will be a tracking system on how many transfer, how many got certificates, how many finished the first year. So the state has that system, and we're gonna be plugged into it. We've already provided, uh, data to the district that submitted to the state, uh, so we can get an idea where we're at for, uh, eventually, I gave you some, uh, data that Sarah plugged in in the district regarding seventeen, eighteen. It's an estimate, it's ballpark, but that's kind of where we stand right now. Um, next year, eighteen, nineteen, we're gonna do the same thing, see if we're improving. Did you wanna add to that? So yes, there is a system. Other questions? Yes, Deborah?
About a month ago, I was in San Francisco at ASC conference for guided pathways, and one of the most exciting things I saw was an online interactive catalog that you could just, whatever you need out of that catalog. It was at Southwest College, or Southwestern College. And whatever you need from that catalog is just one click away. No scrolling through long PDF, searching up and down. It was, it was really fantastic, so I'd like to see us do that.
That's terrific. Alejandro, take note, and if you put it on your three-by-five card. I think we should add that as an actionable item. That's really, you've already got it. Good for you. Okay, Deborah. Uh, you know those interactive, um, maps on the website are really exciting. Um, I just came back from a, a national conference a couple weeks ago, and they had an interactive map, map of all the school districts in the nation. You click it, and Toledo, this is the number of students, the number of teachers. It was all data available to you. So it's exciting. We should have that. We have to make it easy for students to get the information they need. So, thank you. Other questions? Recommendations? Yes? Carol?
I was wondering, um, what part, well, counseling play in, you know, the upcoming changes? And I know there's gonna be a lot of support for the staff and the faculty in terms of tutoring, increased tutoring, but I'm wondering, what kind of support will our counseling department get? Because they will need all the help they can get.
Yes, they will. That's not because they're not working hard, it's because they got a lot of work in front of them. Counseling's gonna be, and I mentioned earlier, student services support is gonna be a big part of the answer to how we're gonna address the funding formula, AB 705, guided pathways. So, um, we're really gonna hone in on the needs of counseling, um, about how we do our work, what resources do you need, um, how do we deploy ourselves in a way? I understand the early alert system's coming onboard now. Uh, with SIS, we can use the early alert system, but there's gonna be a lot more, uh, touching the, the student. In other words, calling them and saying, "Oh, by the way, you didn't go to this class. A faculty member found that you're not there. Oh, by the way, you're only six units from getting an AA degree. Why don't you come and finish that or take it online?" There's gonna be much more communication between the student and the college, and counseling's gonna be part of the key to all that. Uh, we have to look at outreach, too, and I think orientation has to be changed. Uh, the orientation we have is not, it needs revision as to what are the priorities that we need to talk about in orientation? And it shouldn't be two hours. It could be much shorter, maybe an interactive website orientation? I mean, we gotta think out of the box here, folks. You know, what do students really need? And I think I've asked Sarah to talk about the future surveys of our students, to get more targeted information from our students about their needs. More focus groups. I know we did some focus groups with students. It was very helpful. We think they need certain things, but they know what they need to make it. Um, so, so yes, counseling's gonna get the resources they need. Uh, it, it means that we have to kind of adjust, reorganize, refocus, prioritize. We'll have to do that. Other questions? Yes, Jacob?
Sorry, just one more question about, I have a question this time about guided pathways. Um, as you know, we've been working the past year and are continuing our work on brainstorming and inquiring about guided pathways. We currently have, uh, two facilitators on release time. Faculty members were hoping to pick up a third one to join the team, but we recognize that that funding is short-term, and we know that the grant money from the state will run out eventually. Is there, um, a plan in our strategic plan to institutionalize those facilitation positions and to make those a more permanent role at the college?
Good question. We did put in a strategic plan guided pathways, uh, objectives for student success, um, and I think that will include in those objectives, you know, once that funding ends, how we're going to continue to support guided pathway work. Um, so that definitely will be part of the strategic plan. Other questions? Well, this is gonna be an exciting year. But I'm really charged up about it, because it means we can, we can innovate, we can experiment, we can try something. Doesn't mean it'll always work, but you, you know, through failure, you get success. So let's not be afraid to, to address it. There's still a lot of unanswered questions, uh, many of which our own district hasn't an answer yet. And we at the colleges are waiting for the district to say, "Well, what about this?" Uh, I met with Danny and Nicole earlier today. "We're concerned about Child Development Center. How are you gonna be assessed?" You know, you bring, early childhood brings FTEs, but child development centers don't per se, right? So with sixty, twenty, twenty, what does that mean for you? It's a problem. District hasn't given us any guidance on that, but we're gonna raise the question. Our feeling, my feeling, is we need to disaggregate our colleges a bit about what, you know, what's working, what's bringing in, and what needs assistance. So that just came up today. Then there's a new law that got passed, Assembly Bill 2160, that puts child development workers as like playground assistants, which means we would have to make them permanent according to this new law. Well, that's a big chunk of money in terms of benefits, so we're trying to get guidance from the district. District hasn't given us guidance yet, but we need guidance, because that's gonna hurt child development. And I think assistant coaches, Steve, they're talking about making them permanent. And, uh, again, chunk of money. So we've got, we've gotta get guidance. So there's a lot of unanswered questions also from the state that we still need answers about. So it's not all nifty and a nice ribbon box, a box with ribbon, and I think, Filma, you raised a good point. You know, who's gonna keep track of all this? And when are we gonna get this guidance so we can move forward? So, trust me, your leadership, both faculty leadership, shared governance, uh, the, uh, college council, your administrators, the staff leadership, uh, we're all here to work through that together. So I know there's some anxiousness, some anxiety about what does this all mean, but I think we're gonna work through it together, and we're gonna make sure that we get LA Mission the total dollar that it deserves. And so I'm, I'm, I'm your advocate for you. I'm gonna fight for LA Mission, because if we're generating those dollars, we should get those dollars. And that's gonna be an interesting, uh, conversation with district, because they're used to assessing all the colleges so they can fund what they do. And it's always a, a battle as to... And it's always a battle as to what is fair. But now that we're going to a model that's not just based on enrollment, but based on performance, the colleges that are performing should get funded for their performance. Know what I mean? It's only seems fair to me. Those that can't perform because of structural issues, or huge deficits, or programs that are very expensive programs, like Trade Tech has expensive programs, we need to make allowances for them. But it doesn't mean that colleges that are performing have to be penalized at the same time. So it's going to be an interesting year, how we address all of this, but we'll do it. Yes, Cindy? Oh, sure. Okay, I'll have Oliva send out the whole thing. I'll get all your input. Sarah will meet with the team. We'll look at all that, we'll tweak it a bit more, and then if you have additional suggestions, either send them to me or Sarah, and the team, the leadership team will go over it with college council. Our next college council meeting is actually this Thursday, but we would like to finalize, yeah, this, is it this Thursday? Yeah, that's right. We'd like to finalize this in November, so that we can just hit the ground running. Every year, though, we, we revise or we assess the strategic plan every August. The college council goes through it, we look at our metrics, we look at what we've accomplished, what we haven't accomplished, do we need to change something? So every year, we have an opportunity. It's a living document. It's not going to stay static for five years. Okay? All right. Any other questions? I have two announcements, both good. First, November fourteenth at 3:00 PM, it's a Wednesday, the Board of Trustees is going to meet here at LA Mission College. You're all invited. I'd love to see you here, so they can see your faces. I'll be introducing everybody as part of my role, so it'll be a good meeting. And the final announcement I want to make before we adjourn is we have a new vice president of Student Services, Dr. Larry Resendez. We're happy for Larry. It was stiff competition, but Larry came out just like a star, as he always does. So he's going to be part of our team now at the vice president. He'll be working very hard on this whole funding formula, AB 705. His role in CSEs has been very integral, so look forward to it. Larry, would you like to say anything? Good. See? He's already learning.
Really, what I wanted to do was first just thank Dr. Perez for giving me this opportunity, you know, having the confidence in me to, to lead the Student Services Division. I think we have a lot of challenges, but they're exciting challenges, and the opportunities that lie ahead for us are just amazing. I get to work with fantastic people. I want to thank Vice President Alba Lopez, Vice President Danny Villanueva, for all of their support and encouragement, and I look forward to joining the senior leadership team. I wanted to just mention a couple things about the Student Services Division. We have our Dean of Student Services, Ludia Vegas Vidal, our Dean of Student Success, Carlos Gonzalez, who are fantastic, and I look forward to working with them, our Student Services Managers, and all of the staff, the faculty, the student workers. And of course, our faculty that I've had the opportunity to get to know and get to work with, but those that I haven't either, I really look forward to an opportunity to work with you, because clearly, with what the state strategic vision says, we have a lot of work to do. And if you think of the first three core commitments, the first one is to focus relentlessly on student end goals. The second is to always plan with a student in mind, and the third is to pair high expectations with high support. Now, one division isn't going to be able to do that. That's going to require all three divisions, a college president that supports it, and so we all have to work together, and I look forward to that opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And I know Vice President Alba Lopez and Vice President Villanueva are happy that you're starting. Official date, November fifteenth. November fourteenth, you'll be confirmed by the board. So now Danny and Nicole can go on to their work, because they help with the Student Services area. So any final thoughts from anybody before we adjourn? Okay, I think we still have punching cookies, so please enjoy, and look forward to seeing you soon.